Is your microphone on?
Oh, there it is now. Good evening. Welcome to the February 28th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Dr. Morris Woods from Friendly Church of God. Of God in Christ.
With bowed heads. Our Father in heaven, we are so thankful for this wonderful day that you gave to us. We thank you for meeting us here. We thank you for watching over us and caring for us. We thank you for our city council, our mayor, and our leaders in the city, our first responders. We ask you to bless each and every one of them. Now bless this meeting tonight like only you can do. In your holy and your precious name, we thank you. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Tonight, we have a few very special presentations. And the first one is our mayor's business spotlight that we do with the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Come on down, Scott, and anyone else from the chamber who would you like to have here? Okay, Logan McInnery, owner of Ace Hardware Store downtown Oceanside. Logan. When I met you and I went down and we had this business meeting with our Economic Development Director, Manager, Michelle Geller, I was so surprised that you were the boss there, right? And as we talked, I realized that you had a lot of, you have a lot of support out in the community, that you do a lot for the community, that you really support a lot of the, a lot of the things that go on, especially youth. And I'm just so thankful that you are the shining star in our downtown. And so I'm going to hand this mic over to Scott to say more, but I just have to say thank you so much for what you're doing in our downtown and providing a do-it-yourself place. I know a lot of people, I was even asking you, well, what about this, you know? And I went home and did it. So, thank you so much. This young man is our business owner spotlight, mayor spotlight. So, take it away, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Really appreciate this opportunity to recognize and honor Logan and Ace Hardware as the Business of the Month for the Mayor's Business Spotlight. We first met Logan about two years ago when he first purchased Ace Hardware at 22 years old, which is pretty amazing. So, in addition to being, yeah. So, in addition to being an amazing entrepreneur and small business owner, Logan serves his country through the Marine Corps Reserves and has also been very active in serving our community. He was a major sponsor of the Oceanside Turkey Trot Event, very involved with the Chamber. He's on the steering committee of our Oceanside Young Professionals Group and will be attending our Oceanside Leadership Academy starting in April. So, it's really been a pleasure. And we do have a Logan Fan Club at the Chamber office, which is right there in the first couple of rows. So, he's very much appreciated, but in his short time with us at the Chamber, he's really demonstrated a desire to really plug into the community and has been very generous with his time and resources. And for those of you interested in learning more about Logan, we have a story about him that will be running in our Best of Oceanside magazine that will be out at the end of March. So, it's a great opportunity to read more of his story. So, with that, Logan? Well, I shared a little bit of it, but so with that, I want to invite Logan to say a few words.
Thank you. Well, I couldn't have started this whole journey without my parents. They're back there. Give it up to them. So, one day, I got a call from the old owner of Ace Hardware and they said, she said, hey, I have this opportunity for you. Do you want to take over the store? So, I called my parents. I'm like, hey, I got this, you know? I was expecting them to be like, oh, that's really cool. Go finish college. But they were like, hey, no, let's do this. I think you should do it. Go for it. So, I wouldn't be able to be here without my parents back there. So, thank you to them back there. And without them, I wouldn't be able to do, get back to the community like we do. Last year, we gave back $30,000 back to the community through different events, sponsorships, things like that. We saw 87,000 customers last year, most of those locally here from Oceanside. So, thank you. Thank you to the community who supports us. Thank you to the first responders back there that we see every day and that help support us too. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, guys. It means the world to be here.
Thank you. So, next, we have something very special. This month is Black History Month in the city of Oceanside. We did the proclamation, the last meeting. And this year, what I wanted to do was bring forward some folks that have been for more than a decade, more like more than two decades, have been leaders, have actually put down legacy of leadership. And I'd like to go ahead and call up Lillian Adams. Willie Buchanan. Willie Buchanan. Ray Klendening. Ray. And those accepting for June Parks. Now, this is, I mean, when, when, Satia, come on down. This is, this is with NAACP. Yeah, we were talking about what can we do this, this, this year to make this extra special? And I'm going to start off, I did it by alphabet, alphabetical. So, guess what? Ms. Adams is first, A, right? And, you know, I mean, she was teaching when I was going to school, right? So, so I've, I've seen Ms. Adams, because that's what it was before. It's taken me a while to say Lillian, right? Because you know, when you're a kid, you always say the last name of your teachers, right? It's taken me a long time. She has been here, she turned 90 in November, right? Yeah. She turned 90 in November. And I, she was at the Turkey Giveaway, right? And I'm like, what are you doing here? You should be enjoying your birthday month. Well, I am. This is, this is enjoying. So, there she was, helping out with the Turkey Giveaway and just always just giving. So, on behalf of the city of Oceanside and in partnership with North San Diego County NAACP, we honor you, Lillian, for your unwavering commitment to education, civil rights, and social justice. Your exceptional lifetime dedication to teaching and advocacy is reflected in your service as an educator for 36 years, including teaching and high school counselor at Oceanside Unified School District, the first African-American woman teacher at Oceanside High School. An election to the OU SD Board of Trustees in 1998, serving exceptionally for four terms. That's 16 years, right? Your phenomenal advocacy includes founding member of the North County African-American Women's Association and work with YMCA, Casa de Amparo, Cal State San Marcos, Western Institute of Mental Health, Women's Club, Oceanside Teachers Association. And recipient of the Oceanside Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Service Award in 1997. We thank you for your lifetime commitment to youth and the city of Oceanside that have made our community a better place. Now, we, we just had a program in Oceanside called Oceanside Black Pioneers. And of course, Lillian was telling some stories. And there was a story about that, that was said, that I'm trying to remember. It had to do with paying a tax to vote. Can you? Poll tax. Can you remind us what that is?
Well, I was raised in the state of Virginia during segregation and then Jim Crow laws and so on. But the first time I voted, went down to the county office and paid a dollar and a half for the privilege to vote.
Well, come on this closer over here, right? But you have other things. Can you, can you go ahead and say a few words? Just a few words.
I arrived in Oceanside in 1968 as the wife of a Navy corpsman. Began teaching 1968, retired from the school district as a high school counselor in 1995. Then, my colleagues at El Camino High School decided that I should run for school board. I did not have any reason to run for public office. But they promised me that they would do the fundraising and all of the things that go, goes with, with running for political office. Sure enough, I eventually won and I served 16 years and and three terms as president. This has been a journey of love. I love Oceanside and I will do all I can to enhance the diversity and make sure every student receives a quality education.
Pretty fantastic. We said it all. Thank you so much, Lillian, for all, all of your work and your commitment and, and you're still going.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. The next one. If you want to move, move, scoot over over here. Coach.
I'm in trouble.
Coach. Teach. Lifetime Legacy of Leadership Award honoring Willie James Buchanan, AKA Coach at OHS. On behalf of the city of Oceanside and in partnership with North San Diego County NAACP, we honor Willie James Buchanan for his unwavering commitment to youth, sports, and education. Born and raised in Oceanside and a graduate of OHS, we are the best. And San Diego State University, where he played football, Willie was selected by the Green Bay Packers in the first round of the 1972 NFL Draft. He was the 1972 NFL Defensive Rookie of the Year and a two-time Pro Bowl player. In 1978, he led the NFC with nine interceptions, including four against the San Diego Chargers that tied him for the NFL record for most interceptions in a game. Willie spent his last four pro years with his hometown San Diego Chargers, right? Where he tied the NFL all-time record for the most recoveries in a game in 1981, retiring with 28 career interceptions and 15 fumble recoveries. Back in Oceanside, Willie has been an assistant coach for field and track at OHS, inspiring and mentoring youth for over 20 years. I kept asking, how many years? Do you know how many years?
About 25.
About 25 years he's been mentoring our kids, okay? Wanting to provide the unique opportunity for all youth to participate in a track and field invitational, Willie reached out to fellow Oceanside athlete Willie Banks and the two created the annual Willie Banks Track and Field Invitational. And if you haven't heard about it, it's because, you know, they're all so humble, but they invite all students, track and field, in the state of California, yeah, to compete. And it, and I didn't even realize it, but track and field, you have to wait for that little envelope to come, right? To actually participate. And this was a phenom, this is a phenomenal, phenomenal opportunity for all kids to be able to compete in track and field. Last year celebrated 10 years. This year will be the 11th year on March 30th at 9:00 AM.
At 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM at OHS. You got to come down and watch these kids compete. It is pretty phenomenal. So, that's, that's a little plug there. We thank you, Willie, for your lifetime commitment to Oceanside youth and the city of Oceanside. And I do want to say, because I wanted to name a few of the awards, because one of them is at Laurel Elementary, right? Willie was named to the Green Bay Packers All-Time Team, Green Bay Packers Hall of Fame, San Diego State Hall of Fame, San Diego Hall of Champions, California State Junior College Hall of Fame, because he was at Miracosta too, Oceanside High School Hall of Fame, and Laurel Elementary Hall of Fame. I just had to, had to talk about Laurel Elementary too, right? So, Willie, from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you for your years, decades of commitment to our city, to our youth. I know a lot of kids look up to you. I still hear it, you know, around youth, yeah, Willie, Willie Buchanan, yeah, he's Coach. Thank you very much. And I'd love to have you say a few words. I know you're, you know, don't like to talk too much.
No, I don't. Besides that, thank you. Thank you for the award, city of Oceanside. As you know, I only do the things that I was taught to do from the late Reverend Mance Buchanan and Ethel Mae Buchanan, my dad. So, I've always been involved in athletics here in Oceanside. We've always had great athletic programs. I played in a band when I was young and in high school, and this is the reason that I give back. I played in this band, we got our instruments stolen from one of the parents' warehouse. The city of Oceanside had a fundraiser for all of us. They raised money for instruments, all new instruments, from drums to trumpet, the trumpet that I still have to this day. And when that, when that went off, I told myself, if ever I had an opportunity to give back to the city of Oceanside, I was going to do that. So, I continue to do that and my passion is working with kids and I want to make sure that the next generation are equipped to handle me in my senior years. So, thank you.
Yeah, got to keep up that Social Security, right? So, here's Rose. Yes. And then, oh, right. I keep saying, what, what, where is it? Next, Ray Klendening. And you know, she's actually pretty tall, okay? She's a pretty tall, once you start hearing about what, what Ms. Ray has done. On behalf of the city of Oceanside in partnership with North San Diego County NAACP, we honor you, Ray, for your unwavering commitment to education, Black history, civil rights, and social justice. Your exceptional lifetime dedication to teaching and leading is reflected in your service as a principal for 14 years, including at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School, directing all student services and special education programs at OU SD, becoming the first African-American woman to serve on the Miracosta College Board of Trustees. Teach. Founding member of the North County Business and Professional Women's Organization and of the North County African-American Women's Association, in service on the boards of Vista Committee Clinic, African-American Advisory Board for Cal State San Marcos, Women's Resource Auxiliary Board, and the Oceanside Miracosta Gear Up Advisory Board. We thank you for your lifetime, oh my, your dedication to the, to our youth here in Oceanside in North County. And you're, I know you're, you still keep going and we just are so, so blessed to have you on Miracosta Board of Trustees. Thank you, Ray.
You know, I came to Oceanside in the late 70s. So, I've been around the Oceanside area for, for a bit. And fortunately for me, I had the opportunity to work in, in Carlsbad when I first came to, to the area, and then up in the Fallbrook area as the principal for a while. And then here in Oceanside, I had the distinct pleasure of being the founding principal at Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School. And I want to, I want to say a couple of things. One, the library at Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School is named after Mr. Buchanan. It's the Buchanan Library there at the school. And one of the things that happened when we opened that school is it was a marvelous thing to open the school, but it was considered a gang school. And it was a school that people were really concerned about sending their, their students to. And I just want to say that when we received our API and we were the highest-scoring middle school in Oceanside after four years, I was really very, very pleased with that. And that school continues to be a beacon in this community. And the work of the staff and the students there was really, really important. I love Oceanside. I love the area in which we live. I love Cal State San Marcos. I am thrilled to be a trustee at Miracosta College, where we are doing wonderful, marvelous things. And I just appreciate the fact that I'm being recognized for some of the work that I have been doing in the community. And let me not forget to mention the North County African-American Women's Association, an organization, the, an organization that will be beginning its 30th year in existence coming next year. So, we're really, really proud of the fact that we have been able to be in existence that long. Many nonprofits don't get a chance to last beyond 10, and we're at 30. So, thank you very much for this recognition, city of Oceanside.
Thank you, Ray. And you know, last but not least, she couldn't be here today, but Pastor Woods, you're going to come up here or? So, we're doing both. Okay. Okay. Okay, so we, we are honoring as well Mother June Rosetta Parks. And she is so, so very, very, very special, because she actually was the founding person who created the prayer breakfast, the Dr. MLK Annual Prayer Breakfast, starting in the church, in her church. And, and it has expanded. I mean, it's, it's gotten so popular, I guess it's, it's, now the El Corazona is too small space, right, for it? But on behalf of the city of Oceanside in partnership with North San Diego County NAACP, we acknowledge Ms. June Rosetta Parks for her unwavering commitment to Black history, civil rights, and education. Ms. Parks arrived in Oceanside in 1963 and became involved in her children's schools. She quickly ascended to the school board and tutored other Black children about their history. She created the first Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast in the early 90s, which is still held annually. Ms. Parks taught Black history every week to children, and that is every week in the year, and took them on field trips. She has received numerous awards for her service. The city of Oceanside expresses its gratitude to Mother Parks for her lifetime commitment to Oceanside youth and our community. Yes. I'd love for you to say a few words.
We want to thank the city of Oceanside for this award. Ms. Parks is currently in the hospital, but she is doing well. We want to talk about the breakfast for a moment.
Well, we, we thank God for Sister June Parks. She was always thinking. She, you know, she had a, one of those visions that, that always was blossoming. And so, she started the Martin Luther King, she called it Pancake Breakfast. When it first, when it first started, was the, amen, it was the Martin Luther King Pancake Breakfast, and then it kind of morphed into just the Martin Luther King Community Breakfast. And so, Sister Parks is always looking out for everyone, you know? And so, I, I, I hope we get an opportunity to, you know, just express this to her personally. She is, like my wife says, she's in the hospital right now and we're praying that she recover well from this, that one day maybe we can bring her down here and just say it again. Amen? Amen. Thank you so much. And thank you, city of Oceanside, Mayor Sanchez. God bless you.
Thank you. So, we're going to take a picture here. Isn't this fantastic? I mean, leadership right here. So, let's see, can I get in the middle here? Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And I don't know, have you put? Yes, of course, of course. I don't know, if you put all the years together, this is several hundred years of, you know, commitment to our community. Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, yes. Yes.
Thank you so much.
So, I actually wanted to, again, congratulate all of you for being up here again and dedication, because when I came to Oceanside, it was already set. I had to step in my place. But I definitely want to thank the city of Oceanside for continuing with the diversity and being able to include everyone, has a contribution in Oceanside, which doesn't happen very often in our United States right now. So, we want to honor and thank the fact that all of you who allowed this to happen today and, and just kind of say thank you. And you know, all, all need to give your thanks. So, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And last, we do have our presentation of the winner of the Dr. Martin Luther King Community Service Award, Beatrice B. Palmer, who is going to be introduced by Inez Williams, Chair of the Housing Commission. Great big honor here.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. My name is Inez Williams and I am the chairperson for the city of Oceanside Housing Commission and also the chairperson for the city of Oceanside Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Service Award. And I work director, I work directly with Director Leilani Hines, so she can come on down here too, as well as Maria. Y'all city staff, come on down, because y'all helped with this award as well. And so, I don't want to sit here and take all the credit like I did it by myself. We do have staff who does work with us during this process. Let's give them a hand of applause, because you may not know it or not, but, but they work, they work hard over there in housing. So, we do want to thank you. Annually, the city of Oceanside, we award someone with the Dr. Martin Luther King Community Service Award. This year, we had five nominees. And it was tough. It was tough on that selection committee when we were going through the applications to figure out who was going to actually be the recipient of the award. But we had one person that stood out just a little bit more. It was somebody that was, it was somebody that was close to you, Ms. B. I want you to thank you just got it. It was somebody that, it was somebody else that was neck and neck with you on that, but I, I believe that the committee got it right this year when we decided to make you the recipient of the award, of the award. So, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, we like to thank you and publicly acknowledge you as the 2024 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Award recipient. Let's give her a round of applause.
I, I should have brought the plaque, because it's just beautiful. And it symbolizes just, you know, the collective action of our community and the opportunities to give back to the city of Oceanside. My family arrived here in 19 My family arrived here in 1974, October, or maybe the end of September, and we were the recipients of many of the resources of the City of Oceanside. And so be able to, to be able to give back through service and civic engagement and advocacy, it's, it's a joy for me. So thank you so much to the City of Oceanside. Class of 90, Oceanside High School.
And also Commissioner for Community Relations Commission, yes. So thank you so much for everything that you've done and that you continue to do, B. And it's picture time. Yeah? Yeah? Give them a good smile.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
And Mr. Mullen, the closed session report?
Thank you. Council met at 3:30 in closed session. There was no meeting on item one. Item two, council met with regard to the pending workers' compensation cases involving Tiffany Ryder and Erin Miller. There was direction, but no reportable action under the Brown Act on item two, A1 and 2. Council also met to discuss the threat of litigation, referenced in item 2B1. And again, there is no Brown Act reportable action on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a notification here that item number 17 has been removed. Item number 17 has been removed. Now we're on the consent calendar items, items four through 16. Are there any requests to pull, any items?
I'd like to pull item eight.
Number, number eight. Any, any requests to pull from the public?
No request from the public.
Okay. Is there a motion for balance? There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Number eight is approval of Amendment 4 to the professional service agreement with LPA Inc. in the amount of $107,170 for a revised total contract amount of $285,995 to evaluate a secondary location for suitability for use as a potential relocation site for the Oceanside Police Department Headquarters, and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment upon receipt of all documents. Did you have a question for staff? Shall I pull them forward?
That's fine. I think the city manager can answer it. I, I was just curious, since we're looking at alternate locations, if anyone has reached out to Sudbury to discuss with them the possibility of them building and leasing back to us, similar what the county did with the Health and Human Services, building up an Ocean Ranch?
Honorable Mayor and council members, yeah, based on recent conversation, yes, I have reached out to them. I have yet to connect with them to discuss that possibility, but that is something that we can certainly follow up on.
Thank you. I'll move approval.
There's a motion in a second. Please, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. How many requests to speak from the public on items not on the agenda?
On item number 20, on items not on the agenda, we currently have 12 speakers registered, although I believe there is somebody registering to speak right now, so.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. On item number 20.
It'll be two minutes each.
Our first speaker is, I apologize. Our first speaker is Carissa May, to be followed by Sandra Martinez.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm here to request that the city council make a statement regarding the genocide in Gaza. Oceanside must declare its position related to genocide and ethnic cleansing in Gaza. Silence is a weak and unacceptable response to atrocity. Silence lends tacit approval to even the most egregious acts. In the absence of comment to the contrary, horror is given space to expand unchallenged and unchecked. Tacit approval is approval. Silence related to Gaza means approving shooting deaths of humans, including women and children, approving bomb deaths of humans, including women and children, around 30,000 deaths so far, with more than 60,000 wounded, approving starvation of humans, including women and children, approving displacement of humans, including women and children, approving destruction of healthcare systems and means of care, approving destruction of education systems, approving destruction of infrastructure, cultural artifacts, and centers for religious practice, approving war crimes and U.S. complicity with and funding of all aforementioned actions. Individual and collective silence approves every injustice that should give rise to comment. To table a decision is silence. To return no comment is silence. Silence sustains, sustains the slaughter. A public demand for an immediate and sustained ceasefire in Gaza is the only ethical response indicated. That is what I expect from this council, which represents my voice in Oceanside, and every one of my future votes will be cast in light of the decisions made here. Silence kills, but ceasefire saves. A ceasefire today means that no child will die by enemy gunfire tomorrow. A ceasefire today means that starvation can begin to be abated tomorrow. A ceasefire today means that destruction ends and rebuilding can begin tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Speak out on the side of the Saving Act. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to just let everybody know that the Children's Health Defense Vax Unvax Bus will be in Escondido on Friday. Children's Health Defense is an organization that protects children from pollution, chemicals, and bad drugs. So if you or a family member has ever been, has, if you or a family member's been killed or injured by the COVID gene editing shot or any vaccine, please come and share your story with other people. It's an opportunity to ship, to learn about what happened to a lot of people, as well as a safe space to talk to others about what happened to you. There're gonna be two movies that will be shown at 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. The first one is Vax, the cover-up from, cover-up to catastrophe, and Vax 2, the People's Truth. There's been a lot of controversy about the gene editing injection, a lot of censorship. So it's a real opportunity to come out and learn the truth of what's really going on and hear a different side of the story than what you're allowed to hear in the media. There are many claims that have gone on about it, and it's good to find out the truth. One thing I thought I might let you know, Mayor Sanchez, is I know about a month ago you did, either a month or two ago, you got COVID. And I'm assuming that you did get the COVID shot.
Not before.
Oh, you didn't?
No, I got it afterwards. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Anyway.
But anyways, had that been the case, if someone has had the COVID shot and then contracts COVID, that actually is a vaccine adverse event because it attests to the False Claims Act violation, where people claim that these vaccines are safe and effective. Anyway, so I do encourage people that are curious to learn more, to go on out Friday, talk to people that have been through this, have had difficulties, because I know a lot of people have been silenced when they've expressed the harm that they've encountered from these injections. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandy Beal, followed by Shelley Parker, followed by Leslie Davies.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and city council members. My name is Sandy Beal, and I live in Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park, where I'm the City of Oceanside Park Representative and also the homeowners president. I volunteered for the point in time to help count people in San Diego on January 29th, excuse me, 25th of this year, for count people who don't currently have a residence. Commissioner Parker and I went to the senior center here in Oceanside at 3:30 a.m. to get our information about where to go and exactly what to do. We were put in a group with three other women who are more experienced than we were. We found a total of 12 people, and they were happy to receive a $10 7-Eleven gift card, socks, and hand warmers that we gave them when they answered our survey. Some of the people we spoke with were, most of the people we spoke with were young and living in encampments, encampments near the river. We did speak with two couples living in their motorhomes. We spoke with one young man in an encampment near Rancho San Luis Rey. Since we have a food giveaway every Friday, we asked him if he'd like us to bring him some food the next day. He was excited. Sadly, the City of Oceanside had completely cleared out the encampment near Rancho San Luis Rey. The trucks were still in the riverbed, but all the people were gone. I really think this is a terrible coincidence, since it was one day after the homeless count. We felt like we had gone and given the city information so they would know exactly where to find the people we counted and clear them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Parker, followed by Leslie Davies.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Shelley Parker, Rancho San Luis Rey. I'm speaking as an individual, a GSMOL member, and the GSMOL State Treasurer. GSMOL, Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League, is a 60-year volunteer grassroots organization that works at the state level to improve and pass laws to protect mobile homeowners, not park owners, but individual homeowners. We have a great track record with a part-time lobbyist. We are a C4, so we can do the lobbying. We also have two C3s. It is a completely volunteer organization, except for one part-time membership chairperson data entry. This organization is so important. The MRL, which is our civil law, is enhanced by GSMOL. And I will say that a GSMOL member managed to bring something to criminal court and won. It took him four years, and the against a management company, not here in this county, but the management company does work in this city. So GSMOL is watching, I'm watching, and it is an organization that is so important. I, I am proud to be able to give my time. I will say, thank you for allowing me to speak about this.
Thank you. Thank you. Leslie Davies, followed by Anna Maria Hallman.
Real quickly, is Ms. Hallman here?
Yes.
Ms. Hallman, we received an email from you saying you weren't gonna speak tonight?
She's, she's here.
Okay. She's, she's actually registered on another off-agenda item.
The five-minute one.
So the, so she'll be able to speak on that one.
Do you wanna call her back?
No, we'll move on to the next speaker, and we'll hear from Ms. Hallman.
So it's Leslie Davies and Tom Demoy.
Yeah.
Hi. I'm here tonight to talk about the Climate Action Plan. And one of the things we can do to most effectively accomplish the goal of our Climate Action Plan is localizing our food. And we can do this by simply establishing urban gardens and urban farms and community gardens. And localizing our food system will help mitigate the effects of the climate crisis that we are all experiencing. As the climate, as the crisis worsens, we cannot rely on getting food from hundreds or thousands of miles away. Food from big agricultural farms of monocrops are only possible because we use pesticides and fertilizers that are often very harmful to the environment. We need to locally grow our food that uses organic farming methods that don't use dangerous chemicals. Local food is also important during times of a disaster, when we can't rely on food coming in from elsewhere. And we saw that during the COVID crisis, when shelves were empty and people were having a hard time getting some of the things they needed. Some of the benefits of urban farms and community gardens include reducing admissions by having access to local foods, making food more sustainable. It doesn't rely on food shipment from far away. It reduces food waste by composting. We create economic opportunities to sell produce to local businesses and neighborhoods. And there's a couple of other really good things, but I don't think I have enough time to mention it. I just know that we have tons of open space in our community, and I often drive around and I see places where that would be a great place to have a little community garden. And I think that we need to start taking advantage of these places and utilizing them to be productive, and it will also help us achieve our Climate Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Demoy, followed by O'Sullivan.
Well, good evening, honorable mayor and city council. How you guys doing today? My name's Tom Demoy. I live in the Tri-City area. I live on 3306 Heather Lane. This is the College Boulevard, the Buena Vista Creek, the Loma Alta Creek, Tri-City, Miracosta, and the 78 Corridor area. There is homelessness, all, mental illness all over, drugs, crime, trash. Our businesses are being vandalized, ripped off. Our homes are being broken into. This whole area is being trashed and thrashed and whatever you can think of. It's disheartening to see this tri-city area the way it is. You drive around, walk around, and this is what you see. Our outstanding police department, hands are tied. They can't do anything. They can't, they can't help them. They can't do anything when it comes to helping these unsheltered individuals. We need new ideas. We need more county and city services. We need more funding. We need more, more to focus on the tri-city area. College Boulevard goes on and on. All these pictures, here's a gentleman smoking crack behind the Home Depot. All the, all these pictures are taken by me. I have dozens and dozens, hundreds of these pictures. I drive around every day. I walk around this area. We need more focus. We need more eyes. We need the city to get more involved in this, this problem in the tri-city area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is O'Sullivan, followed by Richard Newton, followed by Susan Custer.
Hello, council members. My name is Fire O'Sullivan. I'm here to ask the Assembly for a permanent ceasefire in the Palestinian genocide, the genocide that we are paying for. We are paying for it in more than money. Us Americans are paying for this genocide and the degradation of our humanity, of our ideals. A country that commits genocide and a people that does nothing to oppose it are hollow, leading lives devoid of meaning and substance. That is not an insult. That is the truth. I'm also Irish and Latina. Our people have consistently stood behind the Palestinian people in their fight for, against apartheid and genocide because they know what it feels like to have someone invade their lands and take away their language and their culture. Everyone knows what it's like to have a boot on their neck. The biggest force behind Israel is America, because to do it away with colonization is do it away with the foundation in which this country has been built. I don't deny that. Our country has been built on the idea of conquest and blood. So the idea is pushed that only the strongest survive, that only the strongest can win, and we buy into it because we are on stolen land. The idea that the land will one day choke on us and spit us out haunts us at night. What the Irish and the Latinx know, that we should all know, is that genocide is something that can happen to any group, anywhere. I'm speaking out because I love and want to protect the Palestinian people. But I'm also speaking out because I'm terrified that our culture of abetting and erasing genocide will continue. If we do not stand as one, then we will all be cut down. Council members, act now before it's too late.
Thank you. Richard Newton, followed by Susan Custer, followed by Patty K.
I know the council is considering a Climate Action Plan.
They talked about it at the last meeting with potentially significant costs and regulatory burdens on its citizens. And that's predicated largely upon the advice of experts. So I'd like to point out that experts are often wrong. And we need to take that into consideration before we make great investments in plans and changes to our society and infrastructure. So up here on the screen, you see there's an NPR article, KPBS, and the title says, "When Scientists Get It Wrong."
And their long list of failures.
Next article, this is from Smithsonian Magazine, "Why Experts Are Almost Always Wrong." I only have two minutes, so I can't go into a lot of detail on these. Here's out of Discover Magazine, "20 of the Greatest Blunders in Science in the Last 20 Years." So it does happen. So let me list a few more that have occurred. Space Shuttle Challenger, O-ring failures, failures. Space Shuttle Columbia, insulating foam failures. Ballitamide, which was given to pregnant mothers in the 1950s and was deemed safe, was later determined to cause severe birth defects. The theory of nuclear winter in 1983 by Carl Sagan, later in 1990, he had to admit that it was wrong. Pole fusion, the pipe dream, was later put in the book Voodoo Science by Professor of Physics at the University of Maryland. We have nuclear failures at Chernobyl and Three Mile Island. The Mars orbiter failed catastrophically because NASA made its calculations using Newtons for force while Lockheed Martin, the manufacturer of the orbiter, made the calculations in pound-force units. Two other things, DDT and asbestos. Today was good for us. Finally, Tacoma Narrows Bridge, where there were harmonic oscillations that caused the bridge to fail. So here we can see the failure of the bridge as it's been in the wind. The engineers missed that.
Eventually.
It led to the failure of the bridge. If these experts could not correct this in a small canyon with known wind patterns, we cannot necessarily believe that they can get the entire climate of the planet correct with their theory.
Thank you. Thank you. Susan Custer, followed by Patty K, followed by Macy.
Good evening. I'm speaking about this for the security and safety of our local community here. The other day, I was at the building next to the Social Security Building and a white bus pulled up, which we can barely see here. Right there is the bus. There's through the trees, you can see about 30 military-age men getting off the bus. So my question to the politicians are, what are they doing going into our local Social Security Office? What are they signing up for? They lined up on the side of the, this is another picture of them getting off the bus, but you can't see them through the trees very well. There they are lined up on the side of our Social Security Office, which is right on El Camino Real. They were going in a side door there. So there's a side door. Why were they being hidden? Why weren't they allowed to just go in like everyone else? After they were finished in the building, they would come out, sometimes one, sometimes groups of three or four, and wander off into the community. So do we know where they are today? Why are we letting people that are not citizens, military-age men, wander around Oceanside? Those are my questions. Do we care?
They just like, they look like people to me.
They look like men, all men, all coming, all pulled up on a.
This is your chance to speak, so go ahead.
Thank you. All pulled up on a bus, a white, unmarked bus with the windows covered. So when you first saw the bus, you thought it was empty until you saw the doors opened. And why are they going into our Social Security Office? And why are they all military-age men? And they're obviously hiding something.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Patty K, followed by Macy.
Thank you for this freedom of speech. Evidently, next door doesn't appreciate it when we're trying to alert people of Susan's pictures. There's no reason for legal people to be going in the side door. So when asked, when Jim Desmond's office was asked, they didn't know the situation. And you all are quite aware of it because you did get the photos that were sent. Okay. And the reason we're concerned, if you watch the news, is that in the last couple of weeks, you know, the murder of the Georgia nursing student, which is horrific by an illegal. In Louisiana, there was someone else, illegal, arrested for the rape of a 14-year-old in And these are just facts that show you from the Border Patrol itself, the incident. If you notice the homicide one, which obviously is horrific. There are too many. There are too many offenses by illegals that the Border Patrol has arrested. So we are aware and we're trying to alert the people of Oceanside, just like you would if someone was breaking in the house next door. So I think that's a fair thing. So thank you for this freedom of speech tonight. And please make people sitting at home and those here today to be aware that this, we don't have to go to the border to see the illegals coming across. They're in Oceanside right now, yesterday, the day before. On a positive note, I wanted to remind you that we have a wonderful new partner in Oceanside that's doing positive things. And thank you for those on the Council who voted for them, for Donnie D. and the San Diego Rescue Mission. And that was Peter Weiss, Rodriguez.
Thank you very much.
And Corey Jensen.
Thank you.
They are fulfilling their contract of 50 beds.
Macy, followed by John McCoy, if we have time for that.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'd like to ask you, what did you get to eat today? Did you get the chance to have lunch in one of Oceanside's lovely restaurants on the PCH? I, for one, started my day with coffee and yogurt, had a nice ham sandwich for lunch, and will probably enjoy one of my mother's lovely homemade dinners because I can't afford to move out of my parents' house in Oceanside. Mayor Sanchez, did you get a chance to eat your three meals today? I need you to be nourished and alert as the first woman elected mayor to this sausage party in 120 years. Councilmember Robinson, I'm hoping you found the time between your unwavering dedication to your constituents in Alpine about flying anti-abortion flags from Oceanside City Hall to get some protein in. Councilmember Weiss, I hope you didn't lose your appetite at the sight of our unhoused population in Oceanside. Quote from your interview with PatchMayor.com, "I don't think the homeless population should impact and devalue other people's quality of life. I would hate the idea of you losing your lunch over someone who can't afford any." Councilmember Joyce, I like you. I hope you ate today. You show up in almost every progressive way possible, but at this political juncture, people like you have a name, progressive except for Palestine. You know, you quoted MLK Jr. at our first meeting calling for a ceasefire. But MLK also said in his letter from a Birmingham jail, "Shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will. Lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection. Your lukewarm acceptance to throw in the towel instantly on a call for a ceasefire in this genocide is beyond disappointing." Deputy Mayor Keim, hopefully you got your fair share of grub so you can continue your tireless efforts in filling our county jails with homeless people, a truly noble effort. Besides being offended by my honesty, you might all be wondering why I'm asking about your nutrition. A two-month-old Palestinian child that died Friday at the Al Shifa Hospital in Gaza City. I believe all of you have children, nieces, nephews. I believe despite your actions at times, you have hearts and souls that are capable of feeling. How would you feel if this was your child?
Thank you very much. John McCoy. Joe Hill. Last one before our six o'clock. Ooh, hopping up there.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Joe Hill, speaking on behalf of Representative Oceanside with a ranked choice voting update. The new focus of Representative Oceanside, Representative San Diego, and California RCV is now working together to bring ranked choice voting to the cities of Carlsbad, Chula Vista, and Oceanside in San Diego County. Ranked choice voting is now in more than 60 U.S. cities and eight are in California. Ranked choice voting eliminates the special runoff elections by ensuring the winning candidate gets more than 50% of the vote. This procedure only affects the election of more than two candidates, which hasn't happened in Oceanside much in the last few years. So you all know the facts. To get approval, place this item on the ballot, it only takes two council members to agendize a motion to start staff research, a recommendation and public discussion, and then a final vote by the council. There's absolutely no impact on this year's election. This would only affect future elections starting in 2026 and only if voters agree to do it, to pass it on the November ballot. It's all up to the voters. As a charter city, our hope is that the Council will take a positive approach and lead the way in Oceanside, in San Diego County, to be the first city to let our voters decide the important change in our voting system. Change is always good when it has a positive outcome on our voting process. And our own city clerk is very knowledgeable of the ranked choice voting process. The League of Women Voters' official position has not changed. They still support ranked choice voting. Thank you once again for your consideration.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and hear from Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, Sanchez, and the council members and the city staff. I'm John McCoy with the Oceanside Theater Company. We're housed at the Brooks Theater on Sunshine Brooks Theater on Coast Highway. And first of all, I want to say how grateful we are to be there and thank you very much for the 20-year lease. We're going to be there and we're going to stay for a long time. And two minutes, of course, won't talk about all the things that are going on at the Brooks. Just a sample of February. The building is overflowing with events. In February, we had comedy, we had Stevie Wonder Band. But most importantly, I think, for the community, and that's one thing we're prioritizing this year, is cultural events. We had the Low Rider Cultural Event. And we also had, as you honored some of the folks at the start of this session, for the Black Pioneers. And they were all honored in that show. And that show also showed at El Camino High School and Oceanside High School to about 1,200 students. So it's a great show and we were very pleased to collaborate with that. And ongoing, we have all kinds of events happening. This year is just filled with wonderment, good entertainment, youth activities, you name it, we have it at the Brooks. Also coming up this year, we'll be looking at, and I won't, I have some packets to hand out to everybody, so I won't elaborate on everything, but we have our. Our renovation project, which will be going full force. The plans are before the city planning people now. We should have our, and I'm out of time, sorry about that. We should have the plans by March. And the campaign will be going full strength during 2024. So again, thank you so much. Please come and see us. The next show is Chicken and Biscuits, which is a wonderful, it opens on March 9th. You all are invited. And again, I have some packets to hand out with information for all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, it is time certain, it's six o'clock, public hearing items, item number 18, we've got one. And that is conduction of the second reading and adoption of the ordinance to renew the Oceanside Tourism Marketing District. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosure from fellow council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff visit Oceanside and a number of businesses.
Staff and visit Oceanside.
Staff and visit Oceanside.
Staff visit Oceanside, the workshop that I did, and then other stuff.
Staff visit Oceanside.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We just received one protest at the city clerk's office, and that's it.
All right, we're going to go ahead and begin testimony with Ms. Michelle Geller, our Economic Development Manager. Ms. Geller?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have any additional testimony beyond the presentation I gave during the first reading of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Do we have any, are we, did we close off public comments or can we? Okay. So do we have any requests to speak?
We do not have any advance written requests to speak on this item.
All right. We, I am being advised by our city attorney that we are required to accept any protests. So if you would like to so-state, make your protest, please approach the podium. You have up to three minutes to speak on this item. I don't see anyone standing, so I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to the city council for a motion and our comments. Okay, we, there's a motion to adopt the ordinance. There's a motion in a second. And title the ordinance?
Yes, so in the absence of a majority protest, we could introduce the ordinance now. This is a introduction, I'm sorry, the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside adopting Chapter 24a of the Oceanside City Code, renewing the Oceanside Tourism Marketing District.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Geller, for that wonderful presentation. So we're now on item number 19, advance written request to reserve time to speak. And these are five minutes. Mr. Layton is first, followed by Anna Maria Hallman, who is here, followed by Patrick
Mayor Sanchez, Councilman Ken Layton, speaking for myself. Those of us of a certain age remember sending away for sea monkeys. For about a dollar, we're supposed to get three playful instant pets that appeared when you added this pouch of shrimp eggs into water. What a joke. Also a joke is the treasurer of the city of Oceanside, Victor Roy refused to tell us anything about his employment or scholastic background when he ran for office. Like those of us looking for wonder with postal-delivered sea monkeys, Victor Roy has sent away to get his mail-order academic credentials from a diploma mill so he can appear on the November ballot. I suppose this diploma will have all the value of the sea monkeys and be emblematic of the credibility that Mr. Roy has shown during his tenure as city treasurer. The city spent, get this, $21,000 out of its general fund to determine that Victor Roy not only forced a city employee to ask him to please not look at porn in the library, but that he also lied about it. This is money we could have used for potholes and public safety, but instead we spent, we spent it on proving Victor Roy lied to us, $21,000. Now comes this staggering slap in the face. Victor Roy, and I'm not making this up, folks, the city treasurer, whose signature appears on all city-issued checks, cannot even prepare his own accurate campaign statement. His latest statements suggest that he has $4,000 in his election fund, when the fact is Victor Roy only really has $22,500 if you look at it more closely. And that is only because of money he says he lent to himself. I am told that this stated money in the Victor Roy for treasurer account doesn't actually exist. On February 16th, I asked Mr. Roy to merely show a bank statement to show that what he states actually exists in his campaign fund. Well, what do you know? No response. And since an official investigation said that Victor was lying in his library porn escapade, why should we trust him on this? why should we trust him on this? The lack of credibility is why I asked him. But alas, not a peep from Mr. Peep Show. Jimmy Not, who, and again, I'm not making this up, Jimmy Not, who speaks regularly at these meetings, suggests that maybe we should have an adult-only section in our library to accommodate people like Mr. Roy. Stop already. Your own campaign statement, Mr. Treasurer, appears to be a fraud. When asked about it, crickets. You cost the city $21,000 to prove you lied to us. Meanwhile, he says that just like the sea monkeys, his mail-order diploma will appear in the mail any day now, even while his opponent has two real master's degrees in the field of finance and economics. And where are the other elected leaders in all this mess? Have you all nothing to say about all this? Mr. Roy, please stop embarrassing yourself and the City of Oceanside. We don't want you to go away mad, just go away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Palestinian educator, Zuraya Sedan, says, "I think it is an obligation of every person to speak the truth. I think it's very important to help people come to the understanding and awareness of the truth, only if that's what they want, because some people will not want to know the truth. People are comfortable in not knowing, because once we reach a certain truth, we then have to make a decision. Are we going to act on this, or are we not?" And I think for the conscience of many people, they would rather not be faced with a decision to make, because it's easier to be compliant, and it's easier to not be someone who is going to be a non-conformist, end quote. So I stand before you today to ask, do you want to know the truth or not? Do you want to know the truth about Israel and Gaza? If the answer is yes, then you have a lot of work to do. But most important, understand that this is not an issue between religions. This is an issue of Zionist settler colonialism and an occupied Palestine. This is an issue between oppression and resistance. This is an issue about injustice and human rights of Palestinians, those whom in Gaza are going through a genocide by Israel and the United States. We are complicit in their genocide, because our government is using our tax money, our federal tax money, to arm their military, which has killed about 30,000 to 40,000 people in about five months. 15,000 of them, 15,000 of them are children, that's why I have this graphic here, it shows all the babies in shrouds. I don't know what news you all watch, but this is something that unfortunately is a sight I have to see every day as I witness these atrocities and this genocide. Of those 40,000 people that have been killed, that also includes journalists, healthcare professionals, and civil defense workers. So I'm going to show this fire now. So the Israeli military, and Biden, and Mike Levin, and so many of the politicians in this country, keep saying that Israel has a right to self-defense. Israel has a right to self-defense. But that's not actually true, because they are the occupying power, so Palestine actually has a right to self-defense. But even if Israel did have the right to self-defense, right, Rick Robinson? Even if Israel did have the right to self-defense, why would they bomb mosques, churches? Why would they bomb the UN? Why would they bomb schools? Why would they bomb children? Why would they murder journalists and poets? If they are such a moral army, and they have all this special equipment so that they are so precise, wouldn't they know not to bomb all of these innocent civilians? I know you all are smart people, like you don't become city council members, you know, by not having a brain. So I really want you to examine, how is Israel doing all of this without impunity, without anybody in power caring? So if the answer is yes, that you want to know the truth, and that you want to do better, hopefully, then yeah, you have a lot of work to do. If the answer is no, then I am afraid you are not fit to represent Oceanside as city council members, because your compliance in genocide is the measure, and you've set the bar really low. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Hartley.
Thanks, Seb. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Appreciate your time. I might say some things that are a little harsh, but my intention is not to judge or divide people. Honestly, I don't even know where some of you stand on this. I admit that I have my own judgments on this. My purpose is to appeal to everybody's common sense in the hopes of just stopping the killing. I'm aware that I can't change anyone, I can only change how I respond, but my hope is to come together in the name of peace. Every thought, every word, every action has power every time we stay silent and don't speak up against abuse or injustice. We are unconsciously giving that abuse room to grow. I know all of you have, you know, served the community, you serve democracy, you want to make a difference, you want to listen to the community and to support the community. There are a lot of people in this community that honestly feel ignored. This issue affects our community, our local military, you know, they don't want to get drawn in. There's a lot of Arab families and businesses, you know, people that have lost family. And I also want to point out that the disparity between support for human rights for Ukraine, you know, aid is given, you know, on the condition of they're not violating human rights. But for Israel, no conditions. They're, you know, do I need to list the war crimes? I mean, there's
You've all seen the pictures of torture and
Maybe you haven't. Media isn't really showing it. Kids are starving, hundreds of thousands, they're, you know, being burned, white phosphorus being used, that's a war crime. You know, killing journalists, you know, women's rights. I mean, Ms. Sanchez, I know you're a proponent of that, there, women have no medical care, no anesthesia, no food, no water, no medicine, journalists being killed, tortured, you know, and this has happened for decades, I mean.
Over the decades, it's been un- 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 un-
it's lopsided, it's one-sided. This isn't a, they call it a war, but really, they don't even have an army. So along with this ceasefire resolution, we want the city to divest in any funds that support this injustice. We, you know, we're trying to review any companies that contract with the city and that benefit from this genocide. So we're just appealing to your, you know, morality. I know, you know, I'm not trying to make you the bad guy or us the good guy, I'm just saying that if you are informed, you might want to think about looking into this, because I think standing up against genocide, not standing up, has consequences, like, not just, you know, getting elected. And I'm by the impression that I get, you know, it's not, you say it's not your business, you don't want to use up your political capital. But, I mean, Ms. Sanchez, you want to stand up for homeless rights, but there are 2 million homeless in Gaza, you know? There's, Mr. Kim, you know, you want to stand up to make the streets safe, there's, is it just this city, or like, is it cities all around the world that you want safe? And, I mean, Mr. Robinson, you're an ex, you know, fireman, like, do you think it's okay to, in some cities, to bomb hospitals and medical personnel? You know, just to kill them unequivocally? So we want you to stand up for, you know, for human rights, and, you know, I'll just tell you, like, you know, we've been here in this community, when going to rallies, and, you know, the response is not, you know, it's, the response is growing, but in a positive way, but there's a lot of people that, honestly, I don't know, they call us baby killers, they call us terrorists, and, you know, people scream like white power at us, like, I don't understand, like, that's like the opposite.
Thank you, sir.
But I just want to say, Martin Luther King
Thank you, sir.
Said, "Only love can defeat hate."
Your five minutes is up, thank you.
So I appreciate, I appreciate if you
Thank you, all right. We are now on general council member comments, just at the end of the meeting. Deputy Mayor Keim.
I just want to close the meeting out in memory of two people we lost since the last meeting, but if anybody else wants to talk before we do that.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yeah. I was just going to report really quickly on the trip to DC that I took alongside, I had the honor to represent our city alongside city manager Borrego, Director Hamid Bahadori, and Director Leahy. And we had the opportunity to meet with our deputy assistant secretary of the army, Stacy Brown, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Pacific Division Chief, Ms. Susan Lucas, Senator Padilla's staff, Senator Butler's staff, and our congressman Mike Levin. We spoke about a number of the city's priorities, specifically unraveling the administrative mess around this shoreline special study, which we've been fighting for, for a very long time. And so we had some really productive conversations about that. We also had really good conversations about the long-term plan for the San Luis Rey flood protection that is ongoing. We talked about our harbor dredge, and really advocating for a larger harbor dredge this year because of the El Nino year, there's a lot more sand packed into that space, and that we want to make sure that we take advantage and also make it safe for the harbor. And then we talked, Director Leahy talked a lot about the really exciting water and sewer centralization project, the renewable energy project that we're doing as a city. We continue to lead in the water space, and they were very impressed, the Department of Interior was very impressed with those projects and looking to be partners, so really proud of that work. We talked about local investments, like the Pierview Bridge, and making sure that we fix that, because it is literally becoming unsafe. And then the feedback that we got, again, was just that we really need to focus on getting after those grants, especially through the Inflation Reduction Act, that have a couple of years left in implementation. But again, I was just really proud to represent the city, I was proud of the work of all of our staff that were in the meetings as well. We had really productive conversations, and I think it's going to bear fruit for years to come. So thanks for letting me share.
Yep. Thank you for that. Anyone else? No, okay. So I was, I was really happy that City of Oceanside was able to host the Coastal Commission for their monthly meeting in February. Knowing that we were going to have them here in Oceanside, I asked them if they would consider doing a tour of Oceanside on all our projects, so they can see all our projects, and that include, and they said yes. And so we had several commissioners join in that, as well as staff, and I had served on the Coastal Commission in 2009 to 2013, so we still had some same staff, and actually a couple of commissioners still on there that I served with. So we talked about Ree Beach, we talked about the pier, which is probably the project that they will probably get, you know, sooner than later, hopefully in the next few months. Also, the beachfront improvements, the One of Us Lagoon, the Loma Alta Creek projects, and we went from the harbor all the way to the One of Us Lagoon, and so that was really a wonderful tour that we had together. And they really enjoyed City of Oceanside, so hoping they will be back. We just had a ribbon cutting for the Brook Street Pool, very, very exciting. It's a pool that was built in the 50s, that has served the citizens, residents of Oceanside very, very well, and continues to do so, it's always, always full. So there's one part that is on order, and as soon as they get it and put it in, it will be ready for business. Another thing that I'm working on is working with our district attorney, Summer Stephan- Summer, actually, Summer and I actually started working together about the same time. I was with a public defender's office, she was with the DA's office, so we've known each other for a long time, have talked a lot about, you know, cases, and also folks who are caught up with in the criminal justice system, especially around addiction issues. So Drug Court was absolutely the most successful drug, excuse me, drug program within the system. It was 85% success rate, 85%. And those that would graduate, and this is after a year and a half to two years, would come back and help, they would be like the alum. So Summer has been, had been working on addressing Prop 47, which basically took away all the tools that our police, our law enforcement had to be able to, say, pick up someone, take them to, and book them at the jail for committing a crime, which is really, basically, I know this has been very, very frustrating for our community and for the police, that they've been only cited, and that's it, on some very serious crimes. So what Summer did was actually join in authorship of a, of a bill, actually, a initiative. It's called the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, Retail Theft Reduction Act. And so this is something that is gathering signatures. It's, the deadline is April, mid-April, and she's really, really pushing this out as the best of all the initiatives that are out there. There was a press conference recently with mayors, basically what they saw was that if, you know, if the mayors got behind it, then it had a much better chance of getting the signatures and also getting passed. The one thing that this does, that nothing else really does, is address fentanyl, and really put some very strong teeth on it. Without this law, you have to basically be, see the drug dealer actually give the drug to the person who died, which never happens, this puts teeth, this actually makes it more of a homicide. So was very, very excited to have her. It gives back law enforcement tools to address crime, especially theft, repeat theft offenders, but provides a path for drug rehabilitation, so that's, we're asking everyone to sign the petition. Again, it's called, it's a long title, but it- Again, it's called, it's a long title, but it, it really explains what it is. It's the harmless, it's, excuse me, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, Retail Theft Reduction Act. And is really getting a lot of support throughout the state. Also, I've, I've been appointed to Sandag Transportation Committee, so right now, there's the new, the new phase for transportation dollars, especially for senior transportation. So I'm working on that. Apparently, we had a very robust program through Sandag, and for some reason, we lost it. So I'm working on that. And as to adjourning in memory of some of our residents, Zell passed away, Zell, from Beach Break Cafe, I don't know how, how many, she, Zell was a wonderful, wonderful person, was there for the, for the groundbreaking of the second site of Beach Break. The first site would have lines all around the, the block, and the second site, pretty much the same. She had the biggest, biggest heart, you know, the first time that cancer came, she beat it, she was out playing pickleball, and unfortunately, came back. So, our community, this is a huge, huge loss for our community to have Zell pass, it was last week, was it last week, right? And the second person, I'm not aware.
So, Zell, Zell was fantastic, and also, we, we just lost one of our police officers, he's fighting a battle with ALS.
Ah, yes.
Eddie Reyes was just a fantastic guy, I, I'd worked with him since I was new on the department, he had about 20 years on, very young, about 50. Eddie was one of the most professional, hard-working people I've ever met with, cared about everyone that worked around him. You know, everyone says that when you lose someone, but Eddie was always there to help out whenever he could. I, I made some mistakes as a cop every once in a while, and I needed some help, how to clean things up, and Eddie was there as, as a great partner. Not only that, but he served our country as a Marine, and ALS came on quick, I just, I know our whole department is, is hurting right now, his kids, so if you keep his family in your thoughts, it's, he gave a great, a great life of service, and I'm very appreciative of it. So if we can close with a moment of silence for both Zell and, and Eddie, and that's the thing, what, what those two have in common, completely different paths in life, and they both cared about the city, and were both very important in my life, gave a, got a lot of good advice and friendship.
So, our love to Gary and the kids, all the family, I think they, they, all the folks who work, continue to work at the restaurant, all part of the family, so, all our love and best thoughts for Zell, Gary, and Eddie Reyes's family. The meeting is adjourned until 3:30 on Wednesday, March 13th. Thank you.